Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Tuesday, September 13th, 2016. The time is 2:15 PM, and we will now begin our briefing meeting. First on the agenda is Executive Services, Dr. Atkins.
At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Dodik to talk about Policy 2.21, Inspection and Copying of Public Records. And again, this is the result of having outside counsel give us a recommendation. And Mr. Dodik and Mr. Martin went to work on updating our policy. And I think as a result will be an improvement in our public records process. So, Mr. Dodik.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the Board, we're here once again for the briefing on Revised Policy 2.21. We were here on August 23rd for a pre-briefing. Mr. Martin and I are once again here today for any questions you may have regarding the revised policy. This policy is scheduled for public hearing on September 27th, 2016. So we'll field any questions you may have.
Board members, questions or comments?
I have none.
I just want to say that I appreciate this, that the different variables are clearly delineated in this new policy. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, go ahead into the next recommendation. And Mr. Dodik will handle this one as well. Policy 4.14, Bullying Harassment. And this is a slight change in language, some addition to respond to some statutory requirements.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, during the 2016 legislative session, House Bill 229 amended Florida statute, Section 1,006.147. And our policy must now include the bullying programs that are authorized by the district. That is what this revision to the policy does in paragraph 12 of the policy. We've already included these programs in the code of conduct for students, and we're simply complying with statute by putting these in the policy. Any questions?
Thank you, Board members. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, Dr. Decimores and Kelly Letcher are going to come up and give us a briefing on the five-year District Facilities Work Plan.
Good afternoon and welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you, Dr. Atkins, members of the Board. As Dr. Atkins stated, I am here with Ms. Kelly Letcher, who is our Director of Business Services, and she's going to brief us this afternoon regarding the District Facilities Work Plan.
Good afternoon, Dr. Atkins and the Board. You should have received a draft copy of the 510-20 Facilities Work Plan that will be going to the Department of Education. Per statute, this must be approved by the Board by October 1st. So there will be a public hearing on this on September 27th, the next board meeting. We've talked about what's built into the work plan and the rules by the Department of Education that govern what goes into the 510-20 work planned, or, sorry, in each of the different time periods. This is a mandatory document that must be approved by the Board and then go to the state. Are there any questions on the information that's in it?
Board members, any questions or comments? No questions at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And at this time, we're going to move on down to Human Resources, Dr. Pruitt. As we move throughout the year, it is my responsibility to bring you updates as it relates to the District Strategic Plan. This is one of those particular updates. This is Focus Area 4, and Dr. Pruitt has responsibility for this particular portion of our District Strategic Plan. And I think, you know, this is one of the most critically important aspects of our plan because it talks about directly our workforce development here within the school district. I think you'll see remarkable progress and also some pretty ambitious goals that go along with our Vision 2020, which will be coming forward very, very soon. And hopefully, you'll also find this full of data-driven decisions when formulating these goals. So having said that, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Pruitt for our update.
Good afternoon, Board members, Dr. Atkins. I'm very excited to share with you the changes and focus that we have in Focus Area 4. And as I've talked about in different meetings and presentations, we really wanted to get at some very concrete ways to improve the work of Human Resources. So we're going to share that with you this afternoon. Before I begin, though, I'd like to introduce to you, I know you probably know most of them, but just to reframe their area of responsibilities and who they are, I have the HR leadership team here. And Michelle Freeman for Professional Standards and Equity.
Yeah.
Will Rothenberg, Compensation and Labor Relations. Shelley Halsted, HRIS Coordinator. Christine Christensen, Recruitment. Shannon Smith, Staffing and Talent Management. And Bonnie McFarland, Insurance and Benefits. So that's your HR leadership team. And we're working diligently to address the Focus Area 4 goals, which were created out of the strategic plan development work that had started actually before I took on this position over two years ago. And in Focus Area 4, we have three main objectives. We want to ensure that schools are led by good administrators. We want to hire and attract great staff, and then we want to retain that staff. So that's basically the focus. As you recall, what we were looking at in terms of the way we were going to measure that previously was looking at simply the amount of highly effective or effective administrators and teachers. But that really, while it's a good thing to be, have that, it really isn't providing actionable data in reference to the work that Human Resources does. So in alignment with Dr. Atkins' Vision 2020, we looked at trying to determine the five overall goals that we're going to use relative to the strategic plan. And then as I get further in the presentation, I will share with you the other things that we are looking at because it isn't just these five things. So we're going to be looking very specifically at the turnover at individual schools, departments, et cetera, in the different employment classes. And as you'll see, for FY '20, we have a goal of 16%. And that is a statistic that is a recent out of a 2016 publication, the National Center for Educational Statistics and the Condition of Education. That is the optimum percentage that they're looking at. So that's how we arrived at that. And then looking, we still want to be looking at the school-based administrators because we know that while the teacher is the most important factor in student success, the most important factor in staff retention is the leadership in the school. So we still want to keep our eye on that. Then relative to Goal 2, where we want to increase the candidates, in other words, find those candidates and attract them to our district, we want to look at that first day of school and how many jobs need to be filled. And this is one that I know Dr. Atkins has shared with you, but we're particularly proud of this year because we went from, you know, about 80 classrooms unfilled at the beginning of last year, and several of those in very high-need schools, to this year where we had about 22 on the first day of school. And it's just a marked difference. In addition to that, what we did was we contacted each and every school that indicated some type of opening, and we made sure that there was, you know, a plan in place, that they had somebody that was certified, whether it be they took a resource person and made them the primary teacher, or, you know, what have you. We followed up to make sure and continue to follow up each day to make sure that those classrooms were filled. And still today, continue to work with the schools and the staff to help them find, you know, appropriate staff. I will say to you that I just heard at the end of last week that Polk County has about a, I think, little over 150 openings still. And, you know, they're a comparative district to us. So I think that really does go to show that we, you know, we did phenomenal work there. And I think, and again, I really need to stress, it isn't just Human Resources because the way that, you know, the Budget and Finance Department was, we allocated those resources earlier, which allowed principals to do their job earlier. And then you had the academic, you know, those folks were helping with, you know, the PD&amp;L specialists and making sure the supports were there. So it really was, you know, a cohesive effort. So we're very, very proud of that, and we're going to continue to monitor that statistic. And then the percentage of connects to offers, you know, we talked about how we really didn't really look at any of that data before. But there's clear research that shows the number of people you actually connect with and then how many of those you need to make in order to get an offer, and then from offers to hires. So we know that this is an important statistic that we need to keep a look at. And then in the Goal 3, having to do with the well-being and productivity of our staff, we're going to focus on the participants attending the health screenings and look at by 2020, a 70% involvement. We, as you can see, we went from 42% to 50%, and we're looking to increase that to 55%. We currently are in the middle of our 20th health screening as we speak, and we have over 1,000 folks that have participated already. So we feel pretty confident that we're going to reach our goal as it relates to that. So those are the overall things that we're going to look at as we address the strategic plan and reach that goal, Vision 2020. Now what I want to sort of share with you is how did we get here? And why did we make the change? How did we make the change? And what are the focuses that we're going to begin to look at? So we began with the strategic plan, and that was, like I said, developed about a little over two years ago. And then we had to make the decision about, all right, so we know that what we were looking at in terms of our goals were not the story, they weren't the whole story, they weren't the whole picture. So we wanted to look at the benchmarking data that was out there, not only the KPIs, but what are other districts doing? What does the industry say? Not just in education, but what are the things that you need to be looking at to determine if you're being successful in meeting your goal? So that was step one. Then we had to really look at what are the key processes that Human Resources looks at? What are those things that we do? And basically, we determined that these are the primary human resource processes. And so this is the day-to-day work. So the day-to-day work has to keep going, even though we're going to have projects that are going to improve the work that we do. So you can't ignore one while trying to improve yourself. You still have to keep your hand on that day-to-day work to make sure that it moves forward in a positive way. So that was the first step, is what are the key processes? What is it that we're responsible for? And then from there, then using the Six Sigma methodology, because, and the project management methodology, we had to identify for FY '17, what are going to be our key priorities? So we have the day-to-day work and the processes we're doing. Now what are the things that we're going to do to enhance our functions? And again, using Six Sigma, which, as I've told you, really focusing in on data-driven decisions, and the fact that all of Human Resources staff have been yellow belt trained, and HR leadership and some other key folks have been green belt trained, so everybody has that knowledge and the tools necessary to help move this work forward. So what we did is we identified 14 priorities for, now it doesn't mean we'll finish these in one year, but they are a priority for this year. And then we cross-referenced them with the three objectives that we have for Focus Area 4. And you just want to make sure, are we covering all of our bases? Are we addressing, is something we've chosen, is it addressing one of our objectives? Then from there, we looked at those 14 priorities and said, okay, now let's look at the 14 priorities compared to our key processes. Again, you're looking to make sure you're well-rounded, you've established, you know that the priorities that you've selected are also going to enhance the processes that you do in Human Resources. Then the next step was, let's make sure we're all still working in the same direction, and we want to make sure that the department goals and individual staff goals are aligned with what we're doing. And I'm kind of a visual person, so I created this visual to kind of show how it all works together. There's Focus Area 4. We have the Act Point KPIs, and then some additional metrics that I'm going to share with you in just a minute. And then you'll see the yellow are our priorities, okay? And some of them are projects, and some of them are what I'll call initiatives. So hiring the Lee County way, that's an initiative. It's not like an individual project, but it's a way of do, wellness is an initiative. It's not necessarily, there'll be projects within that initiative. And then if you see the green arrows represent the departments and the individuals and their goals align with either the key processes, which are fundamental to what we do, and then the projects and initiatives from there. And then surrounded by that is the continuous improvement. And the Human Resources Division is going through the Sterling Challenge, and so it's really helping us to move this work and to make sure that we're, you know, making good decisions and moving forward in a positive direction. So then the next step was, we've identified these 14 priorities. Now, who has what involvement? Because we can't have our departments working in isolation because we know that it takes the whole group. And so what you see here is a tool where you look at what, who has high involvement in that priority, who has low involvement, medium involvement. And this is done collectively as a group, so, because we may, you know, you, I may think it's a medium, but the people who actually do the work say, no, Angela, we're really, you know, we have, need high involvement in this because of, and whatever the reason may be. So you kind of negotiate to see where everyone's involvement is. So again, what did we do and what did we look at? We looked at the priorities and aligning them with Vision 2020. We looked at the relationships. We looked at how much involvement each department has, and just collectively looked at it. But then what we had to do, we had to consider, you know, what data is available to us? What can we learn from the Act Point KPIs? What other metrics will help us determine success? What is the relationship of the metrics to the processes? Are we missing any? And then how do we progress monitor these goals? Now, in the backup document that I gave you, it showed you each of the different areas and the different metrics that are available. And as you can see, they're vast. But we are going to keep our eye on all of those metrics, and we'll continue to look for other metrics that will help gauge the work. For example, within the area of teacher retention, the data will have, we'll be monitoring our exit surveys. We'll be monitoring our stay surveys. We'll be monitoring the turnover data, not just that by school, but we're going to monitor of the people that are at that school, do they apply for the same job within the same geographic area? Because that's telling. If you have maybe only 15% left, but you have another 30% that are trying to leave, you know, that's part of that data as well. So all of those various outlined in the paper will, you know, share with you what the different metrics are, and we're continuing to develop what data is available to us as we move that work forward. And then what will happen is, Dr. Atkins has us at Cabinet, we review our project charters. We go through them and provide updates. And you know, it's that thing, things you focus on continue to be, to improve and be monitored. And so each of the projects that are part of the priorities will be reviewed by Cabinet on a weekly basis. So everyone will be able to see. Because as I also showed you in the draft report, is that I also did that high-low-medium matrix with the divisions. So, which they haven't had a chance to give their input yet, so that's why it's not part of the presentation. But because Human Resources can't do it in isolation, just like the success on the, for the first day of school, it wasn't just Human Resources. Everybody had a hand in making that a success this year. So it's important that as divisions, we also have that communication and talk about what is each division's involvement in our other priorities and our other projects. And so the other things I think are important to note, as I said, we are involved in the Sterling Challenge, and we will complete that in the spring. And that will give you, and we'll share that with you, that will provide you a comprehensive look, almost an audit of Human Resources and the work that we're doing, and are we on the right track? We're going to continue to evaluate the data that's available to us, and we're going to increase our monitoring of benchmarking information, continue to engage in continuous improvement. You know, I remember I got project management certified, so we're instituting those principles in the work that we do. And we're also really have worked and have made some really good contacts in other school districts and with other employers, large employers. And that conversation, you know, has been wonderful at giving us some great ideas. You know, some of the other successes that I think are important to note, you know, relative to the Minority Recruitment Committee, we have three really good initiatives going there, where we're working with a cohort group of Hispanic employees who have a bachelor's degree. And there's about 82 potential teachers for next year, and we're working with them to get them certified so that we'll have that group of folks. So that's, you know, one of the things we're doing. We're looking to increase, as we talked about, that social network where we'll have employers and we'll work together to create events, you know, that will allow us to, you know, part of having the employees stay here in the area is making them feel welcome in the community and making them feel that there's, you know, there's a connection here. And it can be outside of the Lee County school system. It might be with Lee Memorial or Chico's or what have you. So we're very excited, you know, about the work that we're doing there. We're really, we're right on the cusp of the electronic onboarding, which will mean that when we hire someone, they're going to be able to do the required part of the onboarding at, you know, at home, at their leisure, so they can get to the work site quicker, rather than waiting for a scheduled time to have that. And then what we'll do is we'll bring that employee in within 30 days of their hire, and it will be more of a onboarding that's about culture. It'll be about Vision 2020. It'll be about being part of a larger team. It will really indoctrinate and bring that, again, trying to make them feel connected to the district at large, which we think is critically important. So, you know, some wins that we're really, really proud of, and I think due to the change and the shift in our focus, has really allowed us to make some very positive improvements. The data that we're now looking at, when we're ready to present to you our recruitment report for last year, you're going to see it's going to be much more detailed. We're going to talk about it, return on investment, what trips worked, why they worked. Again, just more focused on using data to help us make our decisions rather than kind of shooting from the hip and, you know, doing that. So we believe that we've had some great successes, but we also believe that we're going to see a lot more successes as we continue to get our benchmark data on a lot of these things and then move forward with improving that data. Because if you got, you have to know where you are to start before you can know, to know if you're improving or not. So that's why the shift in focus in terms of the goals and how we're going to be benchmarking for the strategic plan and for Vision 2020. And now I'll entertain any questions that you have, either about the presentation or the backup report that I gave you that explained a lot of the information. And I know my leadership team, if you have any questions for them, they would be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Dr. Pruitt. Board members, questions, comments? Mrs. Morgan?
Well, I have to say wow, because in my four years on the Board, my sense is that the foundation in HR has just constantly shifted with no real focus and understanding of what the goals were and how to measure outcomes. I am very, very impressed by the targeted plans, the visuals, bringing Sterling Challenge and Six Sigma into the process, KPIs. I mean, clearly, this department is focused on onboarding best professional management practices, and it's evidenced by all the background work you gave us. I'm excited for what you're doing. I know that you had some big wins with the hiring this fall, but I think you're right. I mean, the big problem long-term is the retention and the professional development and everything that goes with it. So kudos to all of you. I'm very impressed.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Mrs. Morgan. Mrs. Dozier.
Well, I want to congratulate you on some of the strategies that y'all have used with the leadership and the schools to let them know what our desire is, and that is to have a competent certified person in every single classroom. Because I think it was last year that we started with almost 100 openings in the classroom. And, you know, that doesn't do anyone any good. You know, it certainly doesn't do the children any good. It doesn't help strengthen the school, and it doesn't strengthen our mission as a whole. And the fact that you targeted in on that, I think that's very important. And the fact that you are continuing to look for strategies to try to build that bank of good certified teachers is very important. And I know all of us here at this table appreciate that. Because, you know, if we don't have, you know, any research that you want to look at, I don't care where you go and you look at it, the one thing that has always maintained steady, and that research hasn't changed, and it is, most important person in the classroom is that teacher that's in front of the classroom. So I'm excited about what you've shown us. I'm excited about the enthusiasm that all of you have in trying to have and present us with a better bank of teachers each year. Because we're only going to continue to grow. We're not getting any smaller. We're continuing to grow, and we've got to, we've got to be out there and be able to compete. And one of the things that, as a group, that we can do, and that is to talk to our legislators, have conversations with our legislators, and let them know that we've got, in order for us to be able to truly be competitive with those other states, we've got to be able to compensate our teachers. Compensation, I know, isn't everything, but that is a great part of it. So we will be doing our legwork to get that done.
Thank you.
And thank you for this professional presentation as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dozier. Mr. Dozier. And I just want to add to that and say that, you know, of particular interest to me is the Grow Your Own piece. And so to hear that you've identified 82 potential teachers who already have bachelor's degrees, that's great. I know that a lot of effort has gone into the connections for hiring and then the, you know, the building of relationships in order to help us retain people. So again, it was very professional. We appreciate your hard work, and thank you for that.
Thank you.
Dr. Atkins, did you have anything?
Just a couple items. First of all, she did not mention, but I think it's worth mentioning that I know that Dr. Pruitt and Mark Mora met with Katie Green of Habitat for Humanity, and they're looking for ways to try to expand options for affordable housing for our teachers and other young professionals. So that's something that has recently taken place, that I want to compliment her and Mr. Mora on. Also want to just make sure that we connect the, these goals that she has set forth, I think affect our two bottom lines. First of all, the reduction in teacher turnover is going to be a significant savings to the operational budget. On a conservative figure, it's $20,000 per teacher. On a less conservative figure, if you are replacing a more experienced teacher, it's somewhere between $38,000 to $45,000 per teacher. So you can see that that adds up quite dramatically. But of course, most importantly is that continuity in the classroom. We've seen schools that have continuity in leadership and continuity in their teaching staff are the schools that typically get results. So that turnover is something that she's working to reduce, and I'm sure she will, and she and her team will make some great strides in that area. And then I've said it again and again, but I'm very proud of the team and the fact that they, they, along with our school principals and Budget and Finance and Planning, Mr. Mora, Dr. Decimores, all worked together to change the allocation system, to put dollars in the hands of principals so that they could hire sooner. And as a result, there wasn't the mad scramble throughout the course of the summer, and that also helped. So that was a team effort, and I just commend all of them on that effort. And we opened, she mentioned this, with only 2022 vacancies across the district, but most importantly, to me, is some of our most challenging schools, such as James Stephens, opened with no vacancies. And those who did had a plan of action. So great job, great work, HR and some of our other divisional leaders.
I think also it's important to mention again, I think also it's important to mention again, with Mr. Law and making sure that every school bus had a driver for this, for this start of the school year was also very important in the scheme of things. I will tell you that for FY17, we've hired, to date, we've hired 627 teachers, 339 support staff.
And you might want to mention guest teachers also. That was a huge effort last year.
Yes, increasing the guest teacher population. So again, once we knew what the benchmark and the industry standard was, this is how many substitute teachers you need to have for this many instructional, you know, positions. Once we met that target, then we saw there was, you know, a huge change in the less openings that they were being able to be filled by our guest teachers.
Awesome. Any other comments? Mrs. LaRiviere, do you have anything?
I'm sorry, I have to take my phone off mute. I'm just impressed, Dr. Pruitt, with what you and your staff have created. And I also want to say, I'm just impressed with your HR staff in general. I know that many are having to put in overtime hours on the weekends to assist and I just want you to know how much I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. We do appreciate that. Next on the agenda is operations with Mr. Law. And should we introduce Mr. Flock? I see him sitting back there.
Yes, Mr. Flock is going to come up and...
Ms. Vick?
Yes, and Ms. Vick, and talk to us about State of Florida Contract, the facility's maintenance and supplies. This is, I think you'll, I think you'll find an innovative approach that's going to make us more efficient, save us dollars moving forward. But having said that, I will turn it over to Ms. Vick and Mr. Flock.
Thank you and welcome.
Good afternoon, school board members, Dr. Atkins and Mr. Martin. I'm Jimmy Flock. I'm the director of maintenance, of course you know that. But I also have Shirley Vick here, my stockroom control supervisor, and we are going to present to you an increase of a piggyback State of Florida contract number dot four five zero 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 one one ACS MRO. And I'm going to turn it over to Shirley at this time.
I can't fight it. I'm sorry, I'm having problems navigating here. I think, I think I found it. Thank you so much. Thank you for your patience.
That's okay.
We're here today to ask for an increase to the state contract, the piggyback of the state contract bid for MRO supplies. The Maintenance Services Department is requesting to increase this piggyback of the state contract $475,000. This will allow for the implementation of keep stock program in the Maintenance Services stockroom for purchasing stock and non-stock items. Stock items are items that are used on a regular basis and the quantities are kept on hand for usage and issuing on a daily basis. Non-stock items are items that are ordered for a specific job or for a project. Our analysis has indicated a cost savings to the district by utilizing state contract pricing. Maintenance Services will continue usage of contracts with local vendors who offer items to us under bid pricing with no delivery charges. The current piggyback of the State of Florida bid is for the bid period of March 10th, 2016 through February 28th, 2017. The current expenditure approved amount is $130,000. And as of, as of the time that I prepared this document, we had, we had encumbered $124,000 of that $130,000. The increase in the expenditure will maximize buying power in the maintenance stockroom purchases in three categories: stock replenishment, non-stock repair parts and supplies, and exhaust fan motors and repair parts. Maintenance Services purchasing process. In FY16, Maintenance Services implemented a new process for obtaining non-stock items. The process was put in place so that parts could be readily available for pickup from the maintenance stockroom. The process was intended to decrease workers going to multiple locations to purchase and/or pick up parts or supplies needed for school repairs from suppliers and other stores. The results of the new process is that purchases from other methods, that where we were using open POs under bid or P cards, that in excess of $500,000 has already been redirected to the stockroom supply purchasing. This approach allows staff more time to be in the field completing projects and increasing the productivity of maintenance and repairs at schools and ancillary facilities by 30% to 50%. The savings from the off-site purchases shifted to the stockroom. If we equated it to one hour per day, it would, an average labor cost per worker would be $2881. A hundred and thirty-four workers in the field on a daily basis at an estimated of a 30% increase of productivity is a savings of $295,331. Keep stock onsite representative. The state contract allows us to have an onsite representative from Grainger at our site, but this is at no cost to the district. The procurement of the non-stock items by the stockroom staff has increased activity by 70%, resulting in a need for additional staff. As part of that state contract, the Grainger rep will be onsite at full-time at our facility at no cost to the district. This will benefit the district by offering that extra employee needed at no additional cost with a savings of $41,116,000 per year. And that cost is from what it would cost for us to add a stock control specialist to our stockroom. That is not the Grainger's employees' benefit package, that is ours. That's salary, wages, and benefits. Keep stock benefits. They have a local distribution center here and they offer same-day delivery. Daily deliveries will reduce the need for large on-hand inventory. It offers the opportunity to have a larger variety of products in stock and readily available to issue. It reduces the min-max quantities of stocks needed on hand. An example, we would only need a two-week supply versus a three-month supply on hand. This reduces district's investment of on-hand inventory. Additional supplies will be purchased at the lower state contract cost. It offers daily deliveries with no shipping charges. The onsite representative will assist in identifying wasted shelf space of slow-moving items. And the district will have the ability to return and/or adjust the quantities of slow-moving items, which will decrease shelf space and reducing inventory costs associated to those So keep stock expectations and efficiencies. Reduces costs and increases value by reducing out-of-pocket expense with increased cash flow. Removing waste to increase productivity and decreases obsolete and expired inventory by increased rotation of product. Keep stock equals automation. Handheld scanners will assist with the automated replenishment. We have electronic ordering, same-day or next-day delivery, and electronic invoicing. So the summary of the estimated savings and expenses with the Grainger Keep Stock Program. The estimated savings, $41,116 for the onsite Grainger rep, $30,324 savings in prepaid freight, $295,331 of savings from the onsite, off-site purchases shifted to the stockroom and this was based off of 30%. And $83,303 is the estimated savings on shifted items to Grainger at an average of 25% savings. That was based off of the $333,212 of items that were purchased, non-bid items. So the total savings is $450,074. The estimated Grainger Keep Stock expenditure is the $333,212, which is last year's FY16's non-bid purchase items, and $100 that we're designating to shift to exhaust fan motors and purchases. That's a total of $433,212 in expenditure. At this time, are there any questions?
And board members? Mrs. Morgan?
Can you just go back one slide?
Sure.
So the estimated, I'm not sure I understand the estimated expenditures. You're shifting essentially $333,000 from what, P card to this?
Those are current stockroom purchases that were made in FY16 that were non-bid items. They weren't purchased under any type of a contract.
All right. And then the $100,000 for the shift of exhaust fan motor purchases?
This last year in FY16, with our new process, we started instead of having our techs go out and purchase the exhaust fan motors and repair parts, we redirected those through the stockroom. So we want to redirect those to Grainger and purchase them under the state contract. Grainger offers a very large selection of motors, exhaust fan motors, air conditioning motors, and there would never be a shipping charge with those motors and most of those are delivered within next day or the third day.
I'm not sure, I'm still not sure I get the numbers, but I, have you talked to other school districts that have done this?
Yes, ma'am. We worked with, we went down and looked at Collier County Stockroom. They had, they moved to the Keep Stock Program down there. They were one of the first ones in the State of Florida to do it.
How long have they been on it?
Six years.
Six years.
Oh, okay. All right.
Mr.? Thank you, Mrs. Morgan. Mr. Troyer?
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. I appreciate the idea of not having to continue to go, to outsource as needed. I like the allocation. I have a couple of concerns. First off, our expenditures is $130,000. What you're asking for is a 365% increase in the budget to $475,000 of increased expenditures, okay? And that's going on to a piggyback and basically we're giving $380,000 or $433,000 to Grainger. Well, of course, they're going to put somebody in there. They just increased sales by $433,000. And they've got a good program and I appreciate Grainger for being on the ball. Grainger is a very good operation here in Fort Myers, in Lee County, but there are others that could potentially offer that same service. And I think for this type of a paradigm shift, we need to bid out that type of service to see who offers that, you know, this comprehensive program. And basically what we're doing is we're saying, we're going to outsource and single-source a single competitor at a half a million dollars. And we're just going to give it to them because they are the guys that came up and said, hey, we got a plan for you. Well, given the opportunity, there's probably a whole lot to do that can give us this plan and so I think we need to competitively search this to find out who can do the best, what they can offer, and put it all out there for bid. The second thing is, you know, this piggybacking, you know, I really think we're looking for ways to generate money. And I think, and I had this discussion with Dr. Atkins, and I think now is probably the most appropriate time to bring it to the board for discussion. You know, piggybacks are saying, we, somebody went out and did the work and got a number, okay? Now, how long ago that was? Was that three months ago, six months ago, a year ago? If it's a continuation contract, it was two years ago, three years ago? Times change, you know? And so, and I don't know the answer and that's something we need to get, have Dr. Atkins and the purchasing department figure out, but how much does it cost to take the bid information, cut and paste it, put it, you know, update it, put it in our information and rebid it? And the question is this, because once we do it, we include the thing, we already know we got a number. So the number is, let's say arbitrary, you know, for this particular contract is $200,000. So we know we've got a $200,000 bid in the bag. So when you post it, you say, if you're not 5% less than $200,000, don't bother returning a bid because we're already at $200,000. But anything that comes below that, we've just saved that amount of money to the district because we've just improved what was already out there. Now, how much does that cost to do that process? And what we should do is take a look at if it costs to add one person, two people, I don't care if it costs us to do 10 people. If we had 10 people at $60,000 a person, you know, that's $600,000 of savings. If we generate $1.2 million of net savings because of price reductions, it pays for itself. It's all about ROI and cash flow. And I think for us just to say, well, they've already done it, it's the best price, and just kind of shrug and move on, I think we're leaving money on the table. You know, times are tough and there's, you know, there's competitive highs and lows. There may be times they got this bid when times were aggressive, you know, in that particular marketplace and so it was a good piggyback bid. A lot of times, it may not have been, but yet we're just going it because it's already established. And I think that we're leaving taxpayer money on the table. So that's an example that I think we really need to explore. And then now you've got a source of revenue, we could actually target that money and say that money could go strictly to, you know, to teacher salaries or whatever, or to capital improvement. I mean, you'll hear tonight when I'm talking about the budget, you know, we just got to get a little bit more aggressive. And this is one particular one. I appreciate what everybody did and that they did the stuff with Collier. And Grainger may end up being the best package because I'm telling you, and I'm sure Mr. Flock will attest this, they deliver. Grainger is, they're on time, their performance, and it's not just about the money, that just because they're cheaper doesn't make they're better. You know, we've had a whole discussion about, you know, because the question is, why don't we just outsource, you know, our maintenance people? We talked about our service, you know, our janitorial services. It's because it's not all about the dollars and cents. It's about the value to the district, you know? And what does people provide when we have our own maintenance people do the work, our own janitorial services do the work, or when we have an in-house person, we could bring somebody of quality in versus somebody who just gave us a better price and they don't give us the same price as Grainger. So I'm not saying I disagree with this Keep Stock Program. I'm just saying is we can't just go into it, or I won't support going into it without looking at who else does it and what else can we get for the same type of, when you're talking about, you know, half a million dollars, that's a big thing that I think we really need to take the due diligence and find out where else we can go. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Dozier?
Well, not really a question per se. I know this Keep Stock Program is being used out in the industry world. This is something that has proven to save time, you know, cut down on wait times for stuff and a lot of your industries are using a, you know, a program where they, where they keep stock in and there are reasons that they do that. I agree that one of the things that as a board we had talked about, and I don't remember how long ago it was, but, and Dr. Atkins, forgive me, my brain is not as sharp as it used to be. It's a little dull sometimes. But we had asked at one point for a review of all of our bids. This board asked for that. And we asked that every single bid be looked at very critically and that we would do a rotation and then we would have reports coming here to the board to share with us, you know, well, yes, we took this one out again and it proved blah, blah, blah. Well, I understand that, you know, all these piggyback bids are out there for a reason and like Mr. Troyer, I agree that many of them are archaic. You know, many of them have been in existence for a long time. You know, that may be a good thing because that may mean that we zero down on a price when they were extremely low and if we, if we start messing with that bid, we could end up, you know, in trouble. But I do think that to be good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars, it is imperative that we look everywhere that we possibly can to try to retrieve any dollars. Because, you know, one of the things that, that one of our representatives said just this past week, you've got to show us and demonstrate to us before you ask for any additional dollars, you've got to demonstrate to us that you, where you're spending your money and that you're being very, very good stewards of the taxpayers' dollars. So that is an expectation that is put on our backs and our shoulders here. So I'm just saying that I, I haven't seen any reports. Now, I, during my reporting today, I'm going to talk about something that Susan, Ms. Malley talked about at Construction... Malley talked about at Construction Advisory, but I don't think we've yet to see, and I know that I heard from Ms. McFarland and Ms. Malley at one time that they had a schedule, but I don't think we've ever had that schedule brought to the table of what they're looking at, how they're looking at it. And, and the fact that they are doing it, but we haven't had that information, that's a very positive thing that we need to, I, I think that warrants having conversations here at this table about it. So I would ask that, you know, that, that work that I know that they are doing, that we have that, you know, some kind of a report on that here at a ta- here at the table, because that's the expectation out there. It's being done, but we haven't talked about it. And so it's very important, I think, that, I think, I think everybody here would agree that that's something that, that we need to hear, and we can say, oh, you know, some of these piggyback reports that, I mean, piggyback bids that you're asking about, they may have already reviewed those, and they may have already gone out for them, but we haven't had that report here at the table. So if all of you agree, I would ask that we ask the superintendent to bring us those reports, because I think those would be very good for us. And I, I know that y'all are already doing some of that stuff in your department, because I'm privy to that when I go to the Construction Advisory Committee. So, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And Mrs. LaRiviere, do you have something?
Um, I just want to say that I appreciate the work and the presentation that Ms. Visk and Mr. Flock have shared with us today. I do concur with Mr. Toibert and Ms. Dozier that, I, I guess my number one question, what it would be, I'm curious as to if any other companies that do the same process for, in the wor- and the different companies that use them, I would like to find out if there are, if there were comparisons. That's what I'm getting. And if this was really the best deal and the best thing for the buck. So I think, and I agree, we have to be very careful and mindful of what we do with our money.
Thank you, Mrs. LaRiviere. I'm gonna thank my colleagues for, for their insight because it answered some of my questions. But as you were talking, and the presentation was great, and the numbers looked good, although admittedly, that's not my strong point, but I did have a couple of questions, and one of them was, can you explain to me formerly, what were the off-site purchases? What does that look like? Is that our workers going out and buying the things locally at Home Depot or Lowe's or?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Depending on the trade, if we had an open PO at a, like a Ferguson, or a Tropic Supply, or a Bob Dean, or wherever, or if it was a carpentry, they may go to their carpentry supply houses. You know, depending on what the trade was, they went to the store that fit their need. And Home Depot and Lowe's were, you know, daily purchases there. And, and I'm still purchasing from some of those same suppliers. I'm just taking all of that windshield travel time out and redirecting it through the stockroom. And I want, I did want to clarify, if I may please, three hundred and thirty-three thou- three hundred and thirty-three thousand, that's not our total expenditure for the stockroom. We had one point one million dollars in stockroom purchases. And we issued two hundred and twenty-four purchase orders to fifty-two vendors. And the pers- the three hundred and thirty-three thousand, that's things that are not covered under any type of contract, whether it be a state bid or a, a district bid. And the hundred and thirty thousand dollar encumbrance or expenditure approval, that's not just for maintenance, that's district-wide. When schools order hand dryers or fans for their pavilions, that's used for that as well, not just directed to maintenance. And I did do research. We talked to Supply Works, we talked to Ferguson, we talked to Graybar, and the thing that I found was that Grainger carries one point five million dollars worth of products, not dollars, but one point five million products. And the fact that they don't ever charge us freight, they never charge any type of stocking fee, if something comes in and it's not correct, I don't have any problem returning it. I'm thinking, to me, they offered the greatest value for what we were looking for. There's no fee to use their software, there's no setup fee, and they have such a broad spectrum of what they cover, where Graybar was electrical. Supply Works was more of the cleaning products. Ferguson, little bit closer to Grainger, but they're not quite there. So I did go out and invite, and what I found out also, yeah, if we decided we wanted to grow with Graybar, it was twelve thousand dollars upfront to buy their software.
So that's important information, and thank you for sharing that, Ms. Vic. And so as we look at some of our previous requests to do business locally and to be cost-effective and cost-efficient, your research rendered the result that Gra- Grainger was the best bang for the buck.
Yes, ma'am.
And, and one of the other questions that I had put on there, and, and Mr. Toibert kind of said, of course, they're gonna give us the employee, but then I, I had written down, okay, they're providing us one full-time employee or the equivalent thereof, and, and so my question was, then what's the return on investment for them? I mean, the contract with the district?
They want our business. That's what it is. Because, another, if I may, I asked, is your employee on site, work up, does, do they get paid for commission? Nope, he's an hourly employee. He does not have any gain from being at our site or being in the Grainger store.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for that. Mr. Toibert?
Right. And, and I just want, and again, no disrespect to the maintenance people and the work, and I know you guys did a lot of work, but again, it all goes back to our, our function and our purpose. If this, if those type of decisions shouldn't be, you know, who, as who we go to, to a vendor shouldn't be made in the maintenance department. I mean, if, if this type of dollars, and Dr. Atkins needs to take control of, the people need, you know, their, their input is valuable in the consideration process, but we pay people to make those type of decisions, and there's a process the district uses on how we bid and who we pick, so it becomes, you know, because again, you know, we want to be transparent, and we don't want to say, you know, just because somebody, you know, works with them all day, well, they like them better, or they feel, you know? It's not about feeling or who they like or what makes it easier. I mean, it's, and those are valuable data points, but again, to be transparent as a business, and we're, we're the second largest or the largest business in Lee County, there's a process to do everything. And when you're making the decision on where to spend a half a million dollars, there better be a bulletproof decision process. This isn't it, okay? Going this route is not been, is not a, a bulletproof process. If we decide that we're gonna divert our spending processes and change a half a million dollars of expenditures for all the right reasons, we may come to the same answer, but there's a process to go to that when you stand up and explain it, people go, that's the way professional businesses run, make those decisions. And it goes through our purchasing people, goes through a bid process, all that information can be, and it, and it may seem like redundant work because she's already done, you know, probably come up with the same answer, but in, in, from the outside looking in, I would have a hard time saying, do you guys even know what you're doing? Because there's not a designated process on how a big business makes those type of huge expenditures with taxpayer money. That's my point that I was trying to make. And again, it all may, you know, at the end of the day, the route may take us to the same path, but the process and what we're, and just what Ms. Dozier said, you know, people are looking at us very, very scrutinizing to say, how are you guys running your business? And, and a good, and I have to say, you know, on the flip of the coin, and again, I appreciate the work, you know, but on the flip of the coin, I look at what Ms., Dr. Pruitt's doing with our, with our personnel, making it very tight, you know, making it very tight and subject to scrutiny, that when anybody looks at it goes, this is how we're getting from here to there, these are the processes, this is the data we analyzed, and this is how we did it with the, with the tools that we used. That's the type of stuff we have to do all the way across the board. Our budget process is gonna be under huge scrutiny, more so even than our purchasing, but those are the first two things that are gonna get us into, into the water with our public, and if we're gonna do what Mr. Fox has been advocating now for two years, you know, we have to be bulletproof. So that's all I'm saying.
Just a couple of things. I just want to be able to react to some of what you said. I don't, I don't have an issue with any of that. You and I talked, Ms. Malley has been out of town in, to her defense, and, and so when she gets back, we have an appointment to sit down and talk about the, the piggybacking idea. I do want to say this, just in general, about the maintenance department and also what I think we're gonna see in transportation. The whole issue of inventory management is something that's coming under scrutiny in our district. I don't, I really, I want to commend Ms. Vic, Mr. Flock, but also Mr. Law for at least taking on this issue. If you walk our shelves, you will find antiquated inventory that we've paid significant dollars for years past that has just been sitting there gathering dust, and this will allow us to be, I think, to enter the 21st century and, and kind of that just-in-time manufacturing model, so that we don't have inventory dollars, or wasted dollars spent on inventory that's just going to sit there. So we hear you all. We will bring the report forward in terms of our, our bids and piggybacks, et cetera. I know that, I know that that has worked, that has been done in Ms. McFarland's office with Ms. Malley. Also, Jen Schaefer looked at the whole year in terms of things that come back to the board on a regular basis to build a calendar, so we can merge the two of those reports and kind of bring that back to you, so, so that you all can see how we do business and how we're gonna make improvements.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Toibert?
And one last thing, and I, I just want to, I just want to, again, Dr. Atkins made the point, and I want to make sure that it's, it's articulated for me as well. The fact that you noticed the problem and you're out there taking the aggressive steps to fix it, I, you're doing the right things, and I appreciate the efforts, and I, and we're gonna get there. And again, chances are, because I know you guys probably know the job and the process is better than, than anybody, will probably be at the same place, and people go, why did we just do that? Why did we waste, go through? It's, it's all about the perception. And so I appreciate, I know, nobody knows that stuff better than you do, and you guys have been in it for a long, long time and know all the things, if we could change stuff, and now we have administrations that are actually listening to you, and with, you know, the addition of Mr. Law has been great because he walked in and his head exploded when he saw the inventory issues, and all you guys could say is, we've been saying it, we didn't have anybody listen, and now Ms. Law's like, well, let's fix it. So I appreciate that, both in the transportation, I know the big changes that are going, but again, we just gotta make sure that what, that the things we're doing follow, passes the scrutiny of the public. So that's all. But again, thank you.
Thank you very much. Board members, any other comments or? Thank you very much. Very interesting.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Martin, will you please address the issue of public comment?
School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda. The subject of comment is limited to the items on the briefing meeting agenda. The time allowed per speaker is three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Is there anyone on the right side of the auditorium who wishes to speak? Anyone on the left side of the auditorium besides Mr. Fox who wishes to speak? Please step forward, Mr. Fox.
I'd like to address a comment I heard that the board make in their comments about working with the legislature on improving teacher salaries, and I'd like to submit that the board adopt a reality-based approach to, to its business. I've heard this for two years, the state legislature is not going to give the teachers any more money. In fact, they're trying to eat away at their retirement, and they're trying to get the district's real estate. Those are the two goals that they're really, really doing in very, very clever ways. That's why they support charter schools, because the charter school teachers don't get paid as much, and they're not as much a burden on the Florida retirement system. So that's why the legislature gives PICO money to them and not to you. So keep that in mind when you talk to the, to the district about legislating, lobbying legislature, which I think is a big waste of money and time. They're gonna do what they're gonna do regardless of what anybody from this district says. They're, they're on a different, they're living in a different world than you are. So please, adopt a reality-based approach to business. I did review the district's work plan that Dr. Decemore presented, and I love how you got the east, it says it's the East High School coming up, paid for, yes. And wow, that's great. How did that happen? Well, it's because there's no maintenance, at least what I can see. The maintenance budget was pretty much wiped out. So we're gonna build a school, but we're going to shift money around, which, which I'm not criticizing you have to do it. It's, you know, it's what you have to do, because given what you have. Again, it's, once again, it comes down to these certificates of participation. They are terrible, terrible ways of doing business, and this district has fallen for it for too many years and continues to do it, and you'll never get out of this trap until you come up with a better way, and we all know that's the absent sales tax. But I do appreciate your comments, Mr. Toibert. Somehow, it's still alive, which gives me hope somehow in some way, and I do stand ready to help this board any way I can when it decides to act. So thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. And next, we'll move to board member comments. Mr. Toibert?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Two things, just one, just on this note, you know, people think that we're not cognizant that the school district needs to improve. We get it. We know there's all sorts of areas that we want to improve, and I think if you really watch all of our briefings and all of our meetings, our staff gets it too, in every area, they're trying to make the mousetrap better. And so we, we are moving forward in that direction. I, I just hope that everybody that sees these things and watches these type of meetings understands that we are a great school district. We've got people every day doing great things throughout our district, both downtown and in the classroom. And if you ever just, if you don't know, come visit the school, go into a classroom and see, we just have the bar really high. Dr. Atkins has, has set the tone with his staff to raise the bar higher, and we're gonna get there, and we have a plan, and we have a lot of good people in place. So, so this, you know, I, I feel like, I didn't, you know, like I, I beat up our, our people that are working so hard, and I, and I feel bad, but I, you know, I'm not apologetic for that, and I'm not apologetic for our, our crew, because they're doing the right things, and they're working really hard. And I just want everybody to, to look at the facts and what we're doing and, and have an open eye. It's not the same district that you saw years ago. We're moving in a different direction, and, and we're moving with a pretty good, pretty good tailwind. So that's that. To that, also to the board, I don't know, and Dr. Atkins, a question, I was, I got a, information on a, on a program called Class Dojo, and, and I don't know what's the deal is with this, but it's, but I looked into it, and I'm gonna give an invite to all the board members as, as my students, and I'll be the teacher, because I set up my little classroom, but apparently, it's a software that's free, and, and I, I looked in our district, and I don't know the policies or the, or the, or what's behind it, but there's a whole lot of teachers in our district that are using it, and a whole lot of teachers that don't have a clue that it even exists. So if it's good, why don't, doesn't everybody know it and use it? And if it's, if there's a restriction, why is anybody using it? So that's my question. But I will have to say that Sarasota County, which is the number one county in the state, has it throughout their district, and every parent, it's like Facebook for your, for your kids. And the teachers are on it all the ti- all day long, and they can give memos to your students, and they give, you know, information to your classroom, and they, they give snapshots of your teachers, particularly in the, in the smaller schools for little ones, you know, something that they did, they can just, you know, do a, do a selfie of Facebook and post it on the, on the, on the web. And the parents that are working gets to see some of the things their kids are doing. I was just amazed at not only the, the simplicity of the, of the program, the cost of the program because it's free, and, and how many of these parents were just like falling all over themselves, loving this stuff because they were getting this information. And, and all I ask for Dr. Atkins and the board, I'm gonna, like I said, I'm gonna send you an invite and kind of show you, so you can play with it and see what it is. And I asked Dr. Atkins that, because I'm, if this is something that's, that's really good, we need to jump on it, because our, one of our biggest things that we're failing in is getting our, our parents involved, and getting them, you know, into what's going on with our schools and what's going on with our kids, because they're busy too. And, and I, and I know we're trying, and we just never, you know, it's not, I don't think it's a fault of any of our teachers, because they're, they're begging for our, for it to be able to get that information, and if we can get a tool that we can use, I'd like to look into that. So that's, that's all I have to say. Oh, and then one last thing. We had a, a loss in our family last week, Ms. Patty Lochner. She was a wonderful, she was here as a teacher for many, many years, but she was even more here, ever since I've been on the board. She's been a guiding factor for me. She's been a strong hand telling me when I was wrong. She had no, no aversions of pulling me aside by the scruff of my neck and, and straightening me out, but it was always with love and concern for myself and for the district and for our kids, and so she'll be missed. So I just wanted to give my condolences to her family and all her friends, and, and that's it. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Toibert. Mrs. LaRiviere? Mrs. LaRiviere?
I want to let all of our staff know just how appreciative of, of their hard work. We just saw a sampling of that today and I just want to let everyone know that it is not, it does not go missed. Let's see, I want to just give an overview of some of the opportunities that I've had to be out and engaging with the community. Last week, I, I am a member of the Uncommon Friends Foundation Board and many people in our area do not realize that they sponsor and provide the salary for a professor of ethics in the College of Business at FGCU. And last week, we had a reception to meet Dr. Dent. And what a pleasure to meet him and to hear his comments. And he's so excited about working with us. He's thrilled with what's going on at Success Academy and he really would like to be involved and work collaboratively with us. The other opportunity that was wonderful was being able to participate in conversations regarding the, what's the right word? The, the search for the new president of FGCU. And to be there with questions and suggestions. And I did put in my part that we have got to work together with the Co- College of Education and all of the students to help guide people and let them see that teaching is a very admirable vocation and to encourage FGCU students to look into that and how to add that certification to their repertoire. And then, and I know that there will probably be others mentioning, but we did have a very productive meeting with our coalition on legislative issues and advocacy. A big thank you to Representative Settenhagen for coming to our meeting and being very candid with us about ways, best practices when working with legislators. And then, finally, I had the pleasure of attending the 9/11 remembrance ceremony at Harborside. And for all of those who are behind the planning and the presentation, the entire event was done with such honor and respect for those who lost their lives that day and those who are continuing to lose their lives. Many of our first responders have contracted cancer and other diseases as a result of being there to assist. And it was a wonderful day, a wonderful event, and thank you to our law enforcement agencies for collaborating, to work together. And thank you to Todd Everly for his wonderful job he did with emceeing the, the program. And I'm looking forward to upcoming school visits and, and again, I am very honored to be part of the team that supports our superintendent and staff as they work to strive to meet the needs of our students. Thank you.
LaRiviere, Mrs. Morgan?
Yeah, I, I have a number of things I want to say today. First of all, just briefly, we got the announcement today that the Lee Schools TV interns are being recognized by the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences. Lee Schools TV student interns Paige Reinhardt and Vince Martucci have been nominated by the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences for the 2016 National Student Production Awards. I don't know, for, for members of the public who happen to be watching this, I, I think that you would benefit from seeing the work behind the scenes that goes on with our Public Relations Communications Department, working with students, the work that these students are putting out. The quality of the work that's being put, put out is just astounding. And I think it's terrific that these students are being recognized for their work, but I also think it's important to recognize the work of the people in that department who, who are their mentors and teachers. I think some, many of our students have extraordinary opportunities that they would not have had until several years ago. Mrs. Fisher, are you going to bring up the question about whether we're going to add highlight, the priorities for the Greater Consortium as our liaison? Yes, okay. I want to talk a little bit, a lot about the consortium. For those of you who don't know, I'm president of the Consortium of Florida School Boards, of Greater Florida School Boards. It's a consortium of 10 school districts. And we met here for two days this week to talk about our legislative platform in the coming, for the coming legislative session. And I may have been president, but I got to tell you, there were an awful lot of people who made Lee County look really good in this effort. So, to Denise Carlin, the organizer who hit, I think, every nail, got it all done, and, and Cassie, who complimented her by adding all of the warmth, making it personal. They had a theme, Planning for a Brighter Future, I think, which resonated throughout the two days. They did a great job focusing on students and on Lee County's dedication and commitment to the arts. And I'll get down to what the roles the schools played, but I don't think we've had a consortium meeting, which is really about kids and about our legislative agenda and support of kids, where kids played such a big role. And I think they had an enormous impact on the attendees. I want to thank Jeanne Dozier for her work on goodie bags for attendees. Some may still have a sloped shoulder trying to carry those bags out, but, and Susan and Linda did a terrific job coordinating with, Susan Johnson and Linda Benzing did a terrific job coordinating with Dr. Carlin and Cassie Bishop. They kept me on track and they just were ready to run whenever something needed to be done. Richard Itzen and Patty Elkin, once again, jumped in at the last minute to provide guidance and opinions on the accountability section of the platform, which is really, really important. It's tough, you're, you're in the weeds and you're trying to figure out how to elevate the position to, to something that legislators and laypeople will understand, and they were a big help. Keith Martin worked on the incorporation question that came up, I guess, about 18 months ago. Wrote a five-page document, got up and summarized it, and there were a few questions at the end. The consortium made a unanimous decision to proceed as we have been going, in part because he did such a terrific job involving his, the, the attorneys for other members of the consortium. So, that was, that was a great help. Chuck Bradley and Cindy McClung facilitated the advocacy portion of our agenda, something I could not have done, and they were great. The schools who participated. Fort Myers High Marching Band, I don't, for those, many of you, I guess, were here. They lined the hallway. There were 157 or some odd kids playing instruments, welcoming the consortium members. Extraordinary. Then they did the choral presentation, they did the color guard. Edison Park Elementary, chorus, drummers and violinists provided entertainment during our break. Dunbar High, the next morning, did the chorus, color guard, and then students stayed for almost half an hour. And I, and again, I have to give credit Denise Carlin for this because it never would have occurred to me. She suggested that students sit at tables with members of the consortium and just talk free-form about what works for them in school, what motivates them, what they like, what's difficult. And I know that some members of the consortium in at least one table were in tears talking to one of the stu, and the student was in tears, talking about her experiences in school. And it was a very positive statement, but a lot of heartfelt conversation. And I think the members of the consortium were really grateful to have that opportunity. Then, Bonita Springs Middle School for the Arts did a musical performance during our meeting break. Estero High Culinary Arts catered our lunch, continental breakfast and working lunch the, the second day. And kudos to them, they did a terrific job and they, they were clearly enjoying having an op, having an opportunity to display their, their skills. So, that's, that's the consortium. Thank you to everybody in the district who participated. It, I thought, I was very, very proud. I was very proud of, of our effort to present Lee County to the rest of the members of the consortium. So, thank you. Moving on.
Mrs. Morgan, excuse me, if I may interrupt. Since you're on a roll and have done such an eloquent job with that, would you go ahead and address the highlight of the legislative priorities since?
Now, I'm going to let you do that because I don't have them in front of me. Oh, you mean that question about whether we want to add?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Actually, let's see, you all probably got the email today. Tom Sarah came in with a request from another member of the consortium to add a highlighted item to our platform. And I guess three counties have come in at this point and said, yes, they like it. And that is to establish a salary allocation in FEFP for teacher salaries. So, I don't know if we want to talk about that now or talk about it at another meeting, but Broward, Sarasota and Collier so far have come in and said they would like to see that added to our highlighted. Now, Mr. Toiber, you weren't at the meetings. Essentially, we came up with four highlighted areas that will be very simple statements about our goals in the session. And we will not have these lengthy outlines of, of various positions, but, but four hardcore, direct, layman terms statements. And the consortium wants to add one, establish a salary allocation in FEFP for, for teacher salaries. So, how do we want to handle that?
Could you articulate that as far as expand, what, what's the focus of that one? Just a minute, I appreciate it.
Well, I, I really can't expand on it because I didn't, I didn't submit it, but I will say that the goal of the consortium was to come forward to the legislators with four very simple statements in layman terms about our goals for this session. And now, members, certain members of the consortium are coming in and asking that we add to that, which has already been approved, this particular one. So, I don't know when we want to talk about it, but we will need to talk about it.
Well, okay. And in all honesty, I don't have it in front of me either because I left that folder on my desk, but I will address that at this evening's meeting.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. I am glad that Dr. Atkins will be meeting with Judge Seals to talk about the most recent communication regarding project. Yes, I think it's really important. There's been a lot of really productive community work that's gone into that project. There's a lot of genuine interest. I think there's a real commitment on the part of those who have been involved to move forward. And so, I, thank you for picking it up and taking it on with, with Judge Seals. I am going to read, unless Dr. Atkins was planning to do it, this quote from the Success Academy student. This, this was an email to the principal at Success Academy. "I want to attend Success Academy for the entire year. I am enjoying it there and I'm focusing a lot better. I just need one deal if you can. Please allow me to build a basketball team. I want to make something out of the school. I feel more comfortable there and everyone feels like family. I've never been to school where everyone cares, including the maintenance staff. I want to stay and make something out of myself." I think that's quite a testament to some of the tough decisions that Dr. Atkins and staff have made this year and, anyway. And then, I'll end with just, you know, Patty Lochner meant a lot to me too because I didn't know anything when I got on this board. I'm not an educator. And she made certain that I understood certain things. And she did, as, as Mr. Toiber said, she did it in a way that was very gentle and teaching and learning oriented. And she kept me abreast of things that were of concern statewide, which I also appreciated. So, she, I'll miss her sitting there in the audience. I miss her approach to the podium and her updates on the Curriculum Advisory Committee. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Dozier?
Thank you. I had the opportunity to attend the first construction advisory committee for the year and we met and talked about several issues for the upcoming year. And also, Susan Malley actually did a presentation to us to tell us some of the changes that are being made as far as in the construction and the bidding process and how, how her office is going to tap into working with our construction department. Also, we were told that the groundbreaking for LLL was moving right along and they hope to be moving dirt by January. Isn't that correct, what I heard? We also said that our meeting is always the first of the month, so we are actually appointing new members. And so, we will not be able to tell who the chairs are, chair and vice chair of our meeting until the October meeting because most everybody meets after we have that appointment meeting where we, we vote on those. So, that will actually be coming in the month of October. Also, you had asked that, you said that the finance committee, Ms. Morgan, had asked about roofing.
Right.
And at the time, I had, I, you know, I didn't know what kind of roofing, but evidently it was rubberized roofing and they wanted staff to look into it or they wanted construction advisory to look in it. And I actually brought it up. As I said, that was, has been the past experience where we, our past practice that we carry from this table to our committees as the liaison. So, I did bring it up and I was told that two years ago, they actually looked into that and they will send their findings and information to the finance committee.
Great, thank you.
All right, that's how, that is going to be done. All right. Also, this past Saturday, I had the, the, I shouldn't say opportunity, I had the absolute pleasure to speak to a group of parents at the Florida Initiative Incorporated, which is a, a nonprofit group here in Fort Myers that is for the purpose of children with special needs. And I want to read you about this Florida Initiative Incorporated. It is a nonprofit group that is committed to supporting families across southwest Florida. They offer a variety of programs, including an autism spectrum play group or camp for children on the spectrum to come together and develop friendships. The co-founders of Family Initiative Incorporated, David Brown and Angelie Van Drey, are both master-level clinicians with extensive experience working with families in our community. Their ASD group, play group, provides a safe and supportive environment for children between the ages of five and 16 to meet with other children and further develop socialization skills and friendships every week. They utilize a team of experienced applied behavior analysis clinicians who are able to support each child's unique needs while promoting positive social interaction in a fun, natural environment. The program is offered each Saturday from 1:00 to 4:00 and is hosted at the Christ Community Church at 4050 Colonial Boulevard in Fort Myers. And then, once a month, they bring in the parents, but this is kind of a, a place for the parents can take their children, it's like a day camp. And then, once a month, they bring in guest speakers. And I had the opportunity to bring with me Chuck Brown, our new ESE person, and also-
Chuck Bradley.
Bradley, excuse me. I said Brown, I'm thinking of David Brown, sorry about that. And also, Donna Jerriff, and I don't see either one of them in here. But we kind of did a round, a round robin type thing, talking to the parents and telling them what we can offer, what's available here at the district and, and giving them our contacts. It was just a, it was, it was such a wonderful, wonderful, wonderful day. In fact, I stayed for two and a half hours. And I will tell you that when I went over to the gym with the kids, they had different groups. And one of the, one of the groups was a group where they- And one of the groups was a group where they played games. Another group was the big gymnasium where they played all kinds of sports. And another area was where they actually had arts and crafts. And another area was where they watched movies. So there's just a plethora of things for the students to participate in at the same time they are interacting, not only with professional adults that are helping them to socialize, but also all these different activities. So I went into the arts and crafts group, it was my last group, and they were making these little bottles. And this little bottle is called, and I said, oh, what is that? Tell me about it. And so the girl told me that this was a sensory bottle. And I said, oh, that is so pretty. And I said, that is just beautiful. Tell me how you're making it. Well, she takes the bottle of water and an empty bottle of water and puts it over there in front of me. She says, you make your own. I said, okay, I'll make one too, but I don't know how, will you help me? So of course she helped me and we really struck up quite a friendship, the two of us. And she told me, she says, I know what you do, they told us what you do. And she says, yours is not a sensory bottle. And I said, oh, it's not. I said, what is my bottle then? She says, your bottle better be a stress bottle. And I went, oh, okay, thank you. But if you ever have the opportunity to go and do anything, I told them that we would certainly partner with them. But I want this to be kind of an infomercial commercial for any of our parents that have students with, that are on the spectrum, that there is a place for you to get support, there's a place for you to take your children on Saturdays if you need a little break. And it's just, with professionals, great opportunity and I would encourage you to do that. I'm just gonna touch on the consortium meeting. I appreciate Representative Fitzhagen coming. I started to say showing up, but that would be inappropriate. Since there were a couple of people that didn't, were not able to come. I won't mention any names, but the fact that she was there and she spoke so candidly with all of us, as she often does, and I just appreciate Heather for being there and giving us some, I think, very, very good suggestions. And all of the performances of the students, I think, was very touching and I think everybody was certainly moved by this. And like you said, it does take a group of people. Thank you, Ms. Morgan, for everything that you have done and your leadership with this. And certainly, we do have an outstanding, standing staff that assisted you with everything. And that is from Denise Carlin to Ms. Spensing and Ms. Johnson, both, as they assisted with helping me together and follow these little toys that we put in the bag. So thank you for everything you did with that. We've already written thank you notes for everyone that participated in offering something up for this bag. And I think everybody was kind of pleased with their little bags.
Yeah.
But more than that, everybody was very pleased, I think, with the content that came out of the meeting. So kudos to you, good job for that. Let's see. I also want to thank you, Dr. Atkins, for your follow-up with Kitty Green. I know that she is very excited in partnering with us as far as affordable housing. And that's something that Mr. Toibert may remember, that we had conversations quite a few years ago about, you know, when the boom was really going, about we have to do something to, you know, to assist our teachers and whether we have a teacher's village or whatever, like they have an Olympic village, we might have a teacher's village, you know. And I know that Ms. Green has just, she has just the magic touch and can help us to move something forward and get things done. So I was very glad to set up that initial appointment and I just thank you for your staff following up with them. On another note, Dr. Atkins, I had someone contact me about our website. And they were, had some concerns about our website. And I did not, when we had our conversation last week, I forgot to bring this up to you, but they are saying that there were a lot of things on the website that used to be there, that are no longer there. Things are very hard to find, not user-friendly. And I almost brought it up today during the briefing part of the meeting, but since we were talking about public records requests, there were a lot of things that people used to be able to get off the internet that we publicized that no longer is on the website. For instance, we've taken down a lot of the minutes and a lot of the things. And I don't know why we can't have it up there because it's, you know, just space, you know, cyberspace out there. And unless there's some reason why we did it, I know that I was told that there were a couple of reasons why it was done, but I don't quite understand why we did that. And, you know, I know that the department that handles all of our public records requests, you know, I know they're inundated. When you look at the number of public records requests that come in there every single month, if there is a way to reduce those, because we've already got the information and we've got it on the website and it's user-friendly and people can get it, then they wouldn't have to go and request it. And it would be, just make it easier all the way around for people. So if you could have someone look into that, I would certainly appreciate it. Or if you could, if you have any explanation as to why a lot of that stuff was pulled off the internet. And I was told it was when we went to this new format, so.
I think, you know, when we did go to the new format, I do think it, you know, it, there were some things either pulled off or in some ways difficult to find. That happened some time ago. I know that since Ms. Dilwell has.
Before you came, I believe, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think so, yes.
Yeah, it was before you came. So I want to make this clear, that it wasn't under your leadership, it was under previous leadership.
So Lauren has also looked at our website and has expressed some concerns overall and has looked at other websites around the state and feels that we probably could move to a single platform. Because right now, you know, you have Learn, you have leeschools.net, those are kind of separate. And then you've got a lot of things out on SharePoint and a lot of different places. Whereas other corporations and districts, you know, it's kind of a one-stop shop. And then there's a way to get through for employees to get to another site. So I know that is something that she's taken on to take a look at, so.
Good, good. Well, I will certainly tell these parents that, thank you. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Dozier. Well, I'll try to be brief and not redundant. I have had an opportunity to visit several schools and I just want to highlight one visit to Challenger Middle School, where I had an opportunity to participate in a end-of-day leadership class, where the students were given an activity that focused around team building, critical thinking, and problem solving. And as we have spent the last two decades in spending a lot of time testing and assessing and gathering data, I think we've lost something with our kids. Because I observed that those middle school students had a very difficult time with a couple of tasks. One was working together and communicating. They were given materials and they were given instructions. And they were three to a group. And what they did was work individually. It didn't occur to them to collaborate. So, and these are the leaders in the school. These are the kids who are the high achievers according to the test scores. So, and the other thing was, they were not able to figure out that all of those materials that they had were valuable. And so they left out some of the materials, one of which was gummy bears, which make great connectors when you're building a tower. However, they decided that they probably should just eat them. So it was a very interesting experience and I hope that as we move forward, we look at educating the whole child, that we use our early childhood as an, education as an opportunity to teach kids to share, work together, get along, take turns, all of those things that many of us remember as kindergarten skills. And I miss Patty sitting there now because I know she'd be giving me the nod at this moment. And Patty, rest in peace, for sure. The 9/11 memorial ceremony at Harborside was a very moving and heartfelt and dignified ceremony. And I just want to thank all of the people who participated and organized it and all of those survivors and first responders who got up and shared their stories and read the names. And it was an honor and a privilege to be able to be there. It was a very special two hours indeed. The Greater Florida Consortium. Mrs. Morgan, you've done a great job and thank you for putting yourself out there, being the president and putting Lee County on the map with our last meeting. It was a very targeted and productive meeting and we do appreciate Representative Fitzhagen and all of the people who worked so hard to make it happen. During that meeting, when the students from Dunbar High School sat with us and talked to us, it was just a very moving time also. And what they did was, they shared with us that their school is a safe place, that their school is family, and that they spend as much time there as possible. So, and I've said to Dr. Atkins many times before, for us to give kids the opportunity to stay at school till 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock is very valuable because it gives them a longer time to feel safe. It gives them the sense of family that they may not have in their own homes. And it protects them from some of the dangers in their community. And also, it is an opportunity for them to grow socially. So I wanted to say that that was like the best thing I could have heard all week long, was the way they appreciated their principal. And they said, oh yeah, he gets on us, but it's only because he loves us and he cares about us and he wants us to do better. So I want to hear that from all of our students at every school. And I know that that is what we're working towards and thank you for that, Dr. Atkins. Let me see. Project YES, we've made so many changes and strides in making adjustments to our code of conduct. And now with the Success Academy, starting a new way of helping kids at risk to be successful. And I know that, I appreciate that you will meet with Judge Seals. And I think that even that being absent, that we will continue in this district to meet kids where they are, to identify those who are having difficulties and the reasons for that, and then to provide services that will support them. I think that as we looked at the changes in the bullying policy and we talk about our contract with the Hanley Center and look at the Drug Free Coalition activities and the prevention run that we're going to participate in, it gives me an opportunity just to keep the conversation going about the need in this district for a comprehensive health education policy. Because that's what it's all about. The comprehensive health education policy is part and parcel of all of those different efforts, which we are expending now. And if we put it all together under one umbrella, it will be certainly much more organized and more targeted. And it will ensure that all of our students across the district will have an opportunity to enjoy the benefits of that. And one last thing I'll mention, because I'm looking at Mr. Fox sitting right in front of me. I want to, I asked Dr. Atkins earlier this week about a conversation about the sales tax possibility and whether or not we have had any response from the community regarding the survey and like a sponsorship in marketing. And also, have we looked at the successes of other counties, such as Sarasota, who have enjoyed the sales tax referendum success, not once but twice, and have benefited from that in that they're able to provide a more rich and well-rounded education for their kids. And with that, I will talk about the legislative priorities this evening. And I think that we will move on to Mr. Martin.
Yes, Mrs. Board Members, I do have a school law minute this afternoon. And the subject is a charter school application process. It's Section 1,203.33 of Florida statutes that establishes the process for submission of a charter school to a school district. The statute allows for submission of such an application by the 1st of August in order to operate a charter school for the following school year. The statute additionally allows the opportunity for an applicant to submit a draft by the 1st of May. In addition to submitting the application, the applicant is also required to submit a $500 check at that time, the intent being for that $500 to cover the cost of the staff required to review the application. Because the staff, the school district is required to review such a draft application by the 1st of July and provide feedback on material deficiencies in that draft application. That then provides the applicant to revise their document and submit that again by the final application date, deadline of August 1st. Applications are required to be submitted on a model application form that has been adopted by the State Board of Education that has certain required components. In addition, the State Board of Education has adopted a standard evaluation instrument that districts are required to use in evaluating those applications. The evaluation instrument has stated criteria by which the applications are to be judged. And the failure to meet such criteria forms a basis to deny an application if the school board chooses to do so. There is no requirement in the statute allowing for an opportunity to revise that final application submitted on the 1st of August to make any substantive changes, revisions to the application. There is a required opportunity to allow the applicant to fix non-substantive typographical and clerical errors that are used as a basis to deny the application, but not to make substantive revisions. The statute requires the school board to act within 60 days of receiving an application to approve or deny that application for charter school status. And as part of that action, the board adopts a notice that is required by statute to send to the applicant indicating the reasons for denial. The applicant can appeal the decision of the school board within 30 days. That appeal goes to the Charter School Appeals Commission, the membership of which is made up of one-half representatives from charter schools and one-half representatives from school district approvers. And the Charter School Appeal Commission makes findings with respect to the quality of that application. And the unsuccessful party based upon those findings can then seek a further review by the State Board of Education. The statute provides the school board is then required to implement the decision of that state board. That's all I have today, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. And Dr. Atkins?
Well, just first of all, just since you brought it up in the school law minute, I do want to say that, you know, you had some emails that were sent regarding the one request. And, you know, this is a charter school application review process, something we take very seriously. I know that in particular, Mr. Martin and Dr. McCullers put in considerable amount of time on this particular one. They took the time to meet with me personally to go over some of the concerns that they had expressed. And we did communicate that to them. So I do want to compliment them on their efforts and these decisions are never hasty ones. I also did get confirmation from Dr. Dessemours, we're going to work together to get a meeting to meet the requests of the board regarding the RFP and bid and the rotation. And we'll get that discussion brought forward to you in the very near future. And I had already been planning to meet with Susan Millay, as I said, to discuss some of the other ideas that had been raised last week. I do need to get some direction from the school board regarding the, how we're going to run the School Board Teacher Advisory Council, or whatever you, we would like to call it. I do want to thank all of you for weighing in on your representatives. So we've got that in place and have shared that out. Now we'd like to get started on the meeting. So suggestions, I did talk briefly to Mr. Martin. And I think the closest we have to something like this in terms of the groups that you currently have is your Student Advisory Council, where it's more of a freer agenda. So my recommendations today are to kind of pattern it after that particular group. That group happens to meet quarterly. You know, it is, we would be advertising these positions so that all board members could attend. We would need to talk about if quarterly is often enough, or if you want to meet more than that. Also, are all of you planning to attend, or do you want to do a rotation? Who would develop the agenda is another question. And that may be something that, you know, you may want to work with the teachers to do so. What is the term of service of the people that you've nominated for this committee? And then who would ultimately facilitate those meetings? So, and then finally, if you would like, we can go. So, and then finally, if you would like, we can go ahead and find a date and work with your calendars and set a meeting up for October, if that's okay with you. In terms of those questions, and I don't know if Mr. Martin has any others, are any feedback on how often that you'd like to meet? And again, I think student advisory is quarterly, or at least that's what I have in this. I don't know if it meets monthly now or not.
It meets monthly.
Okay, so it's monthly now. How would you like to do the teacher council, advisory council?
Well, the idea came from a teacher at Fort Myers High School. And she actually approached me and said that, you know, there are things a lot of times that, you know, that maybe when they convey to us, we don't understand or whatever, and they would really like an opportunity to talk to staff about certain things. So, and I'm going to go back several years. I don't know if any of you remember, but Dr. Adams actually had a teacher advisory group years ago. And they started meeting like quarterly, and then they went to every other month. And I think by the time all was said and done, they were meeting monthly. And I think the structure was, and it kind of sounded like that was what, where this may have come from. But the issues that they raised were issues that were district-wide issues, such as what are the issues that I brought to you this week about lesson plan formats?
Right.
You know, that was an issue that some teachers had been talking about. And so, if, I think that they will probably be able to create their own agenda. And, you know, we don't want it to become a gripe session, obviously. We want it to be productive. And they should be, you know, solution seekers, seeking ways that they can help us to understand a problem and how can we solve it. So, that's the function that I see of this group.
Okay, that helps.
Because after all, they're the ones that touch all of this stuff. And I will tell you something that I heard, and now, I'm not, we'll talk about that later. That's all I have.
Any other suggestions or comments? I was just going to say that when we started with the Student Advisory Committee, that we let them set the agenda, and then they decided that they wanted to meet monthly. So, we pretty much left the format to their choice once we had the organizational meeting. And it's been pretty successful. I think that it's been focused, staff has been wonderful in providing information and conversing with the students and listening to the ideas and the suggestions that the students have had. So, I can see that working well as a format. Mrs. Morgan?
Yeah, I just want to add, I think it is important that we all make an effort to attend. We've asked teachers to make a commitment, and they already have overwhelming schedules. So, I think we owe them the courtesy. We've asked, we've put this committee together, we should, as a board, attempt to attend, if our schedules permit.
Mrs. Dozier?
Well, and I will tell you, I know when we met before, because I did have the privilege of serving for a term, and they voiced opinion, an opinion that they really wanted to be able to talk very openly, and they really didn't want us there. So, what we may want to do, and I would just suggest this, is that maybe we attend the first meeting and then ask them, do they want us to come? I know the kids, you know, they really, you know, I feel empowered because we're all there. But I wouldn't want to do anything that would make the teachers feel like we are. I want them to be able to have a free dialogue, and I don't want them to be intimidated by our presence there.
And that's fine by me. I just didn't want to start off with a rotation.
Right, right. Okay, I misunderstood you, sorry.
No, no, I wasn't clear.
And excuse me, but my understanding was that this was a teacher advisory to the board. So, I was anticipating that we would be expected to be there to hear what they had to say.
Is it?
And that was what I asked the people who I invited, if they would be on this council of teachers advising the board or sharing with us their ideas and suggestions. Mr. Toyber?
I thought it was more of a conduit to the superintendent.
Oh.
Maybe I misunderstood. I mean, I think it's, I think it's information I think we need to know, but I thought it was a conduit to the superintendent. Dr. Atkins, can you tell me your feeling on that, or?
My understanding was that I would be in attendance to all the meetings, and that, you know, the board attendance wasn't something that, I had thought that board members may be there. But, you know, but again, that's something that may have been my misunderstanding. I, but the rest of it, I think we've got, we've got down. What Mrs. Dozier described in terms of district-wide issues, a vehicle which, you know, teachers could raise these issues so that they could be, you know, they could be addressed by staff, that's certainly, I understood, as I understood the charge of this group.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
I kind of envisioned it, and again, just my thoughts, and maybe it's a good time to talk about it, and I hate to put Ms., Dr. Carlin on the spot, but, you know, similar to how the DAC committee works, is there's an executive DAC that meets and sets up a schedule. And so, Dr. Carlin would be part of that meeting with the superintendent and the board. We would set the agenda as the five board members with the superintendent and Dr. Carlin. She would kind of get her marching orders from us, take that into the, into the meeting. And so, she now conducts the meeting with the superintendent there and gives the teachers the opportunity to work with the superintendent based upon what we had decided on our executive. And then we get, we'd get, you know, feedback from that meeting. So that we're not involved, because I don't want to have the politics involved. I want the teachers to really say, these are some of the issues, you know, but we direct a direction as far as, you know, the topics that are there. I don't know.
I mean, I did take it as a teacher advisory board. You all appoint them. I am the, you know, staff member that, you know, listens to those concerns and allows me to be able to respond on your behalf.
Okay. Mrs. LaRiviere?
This is Ms. LaRiviere. I would, if I could, I'd like to just weigh in on it for a little bit. But I think there's a lot of validity about if we were to have a group prepare the agenda, when DAC needs to prepare the agenda, it's the participants of DAC who are part of that executive session to plan the agenda. And I believe that it's important that if we were to go to that model, we need to have some teachers there who will be part of the agenda planning, to be sure. We want the teachers to have, we want this to be a conduit for the superintendent and the teachers, so they are able to speak freely, and that topics of conversation would not be controlled by what we, as board members, set for the agenda.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. LaRiviere. Any other comments?
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
When the board is done with this discussion, might I could just give some advice concerning policy and law with respect to?
Hello?
The issues, but?
Yes.
Did I lose my connection?
Mrs. LaRiviere, do you hear me? Mr. Martin, will you proceed? Thank you.
I did have a discussion with Dr. Atkins about this matter. And of course, you presently have policy 1.20 that establishes, and would answer many of these questions with respect to the committees that are covered by that policy. I haven't heard any suggestion that this committee, this council be included in that policy, so that's why you would need to establish these different practices separately. In the past, when the Student Advisory Committee was established, the superintendent at that time brought forward to the school board a recommendation that addressed many of these different issues. And so, in my conversation with Dr. Atkins, I suggested to him that if this is not going to become part of policy, just so you have some record of what the board has agreed to with respect to the practices on this issue, that it come forward as a recommendation. And in that agenda item, these different issues be addressed. Just one other caution, of course, the sunshine law has application in this matter, based on what I understand this committee council would be doing, making some form of recommendations to the superintendent or to the board. Sunshine law would apply. There's requirements for notice in advance of the meeting for the preparation of an agenda, at least two days in advance of the meeting, and that that be available to the public. Additionally, if there were meetings of multiple school board members, or a meeting of a subset of the committee in advance, those would also be meetings subject to the sunshine law with a requirement for notice and open to the public and such. So, just considerations to keep in mind.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, Dr. Atkins, we'll wait for the next word then.
What I'll do is, I think I can go ahead and set a meeting date, and then bring you a recommendation, probably at the next, next meeting, okay?
Thank you very much.
Just to finish my comments, sorry.
No, that's okay.
Just a couple really quick things. First of all, I do appreciate the comments regarding the Success Academy. I did have a quick conversation, Mr. Burns, today about Dunbar Community, and an idea to work not only with Success Academy, but also with some of our other schools in that community to develop some after-school and summer school programs this year. So, he's, he's working to put together a proposal. He's also brought forward an idea to do some Saturday basketball, which he's done in the past, but, you know, we're looking to do in the future, which grew up to 30, 40 kids last year. So, we'll be pursuing that idea as well. We do have brand-new buses that have been pulled up outside, so you have an opportunity right now to go view those if you wish. We really would like to invite you to come out and see the buses, and as I understand, they're right out front. So, you know, I know we don't have a lot of time between now and the next meeting, so I'll be very brief and cut it off at that with my comments. But I just appreciate Mr. Law and the transportation team for what they've done to get those buses here with many more on the way. So, thank you.
These are the ones we're leasing?
These are purchased, these are purchased, and then leases are on the way, as I understand it, yes. Okay.
Thank you very much. And one last thing for the good of the order. I don't, Mrs. LaRiviere, are you back? Mr. Martin?
Yes, I am back. I'm reconnected.
Okay. So, then we're at good of the order at this point?
Yes, I'm requesting that we have a discussion at the DIAS to come up with a preliminary or suggested date for a full-day workshop. This workshop would be to plan for onboarding of new school board members, along with possible concerns and changes in the protocol handbook. Am I still there?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, all of a sudden, I thought I was cut off again. And then also, for the board, we also need time for board members and the superintendent to have a discussion and review the superintendent's evaluation.
Then, Mrs. LaRiviere has suggested that we schedule a full-day workshop for onboarding of new board members and review of our protocols. And I guess we would need to decide when and where. So, board members, Mrs. Dozier?
Well, I guess I don't really know exactly what she's talking about. What I had in mind when I had said to, I believe, Ms. Johnson, when I had a discussion with her, was that we usually have a organizational meeting, which is usually-
Usually half-a-day workshop.
Workshop.
Right.
It's usually a half-a-day, and that was what I was thinking that we would do. And as far as the superintendent's evaluation, that's a new practice that I really don't know that we need to discuss it here at the table. I don't need to. In fact, he and I are getting ready to have a meeting right now to talk about his, and that's something-
Well, Wendy, just to interject, we came up with a plan with the evaluation for the superintendent. It included time for us to have just a workshop for conversation, much like we did for his interim evaluation, where there were conversations that were had. It's just a time to go through that, and it also allows for that to be done also prior to, we can, many districts do that prior to release of the final evaluations to the public. And then it's also the day at the next meeting following that workshop, then it is brought forward, you know, it's just brought forward that it's available, and so on. So, I was just following that, that was, that we had included and was part of the suggested plan of action. So, that's why I'm bringing that up. And with the onboarding of new school board members, it is not necessarily like we do our organizational meeting, but how we're going to plan for, if we, we need to do some planning for the changes and any possible new advisory committees that may need to be brought forward now that we will be moving from five to seven. So, those were conversations, those are conversations we need to have prior to the scoreboard, the organizational meeting that we have with the new school board members and ourselves.
Thank you, Mrs. LaRiviere. Mr. Toyber?
I don't know if that's appropriate, that we're making decisions that are going, that's going to impact the two new board members that are there. I think as a team, how we're going to move forward as a member of seven should be participatory with the two new members, actually, the, all the seven that are actually moving forward should be making those decisions as a group. I know that the two, I would feel like it's kind of slighted or handed to me if this is how we're going to run it without any, any say or any discussion. So, I would like to hold off until we have, you know, the organizational meeting ahead of time is this typical half-day to get things moving, you know, as far as the outline of the organization is fine. But I would be remiss to say I would have a problem with anything that has to do with forward-going of the seven unless they're, they're involved. I also like to say that I agree with Ms. Dozier to take the time to go over the superintendent's review after we've got it, you know, in there. I think it's incumbent on each school board member to review with the superintendent what the scores are. And then if the scores come out and they're all over the map, then it may be a discussion that we may want to have, that we want to all get back together and kind of see why we're not all on the same page. But to do it ahead of time, or to discuss it in the process, I think it's just, is very inefficient, and it's just time that we shouldn't need to be spending to, just to have meetings for the sake of meetings.
I understand that, that we need to remove that out of the steps that were included with the, with everything that was written for the evaluation process. We're moving from a different evaluation process, but now we're, before we never had weighted scoring, now we are moving with weighted scoring. So, it's going to be a little bit different. It's entire, this is, this is up to the board to make decisions, but we have, we have a lot of things that many of us have asked for. I know that I have asked for changes, that I know that we are requesting some changes and some amendments to the protocol handbook. Some others have brought that up as well. They'd like to review that and discuss it. I don't want to see us make any decisions involving what happens with the new board, but it would help us if we have a plan of action of options to present of different ways to go. A half-day workshop for organization with them will not be able to be effective if we have to do all of that, all of those components at the table. It would probably need to move to a full-day onboarding and organizational meeting.
Yeah, with, I think, okay, I do think we need to have some time to discuss the superintendent's evaluation, because we do have to set goals. I mean, we do the evaluation, and then he needs to know if there's something in there that we want to set as a priority moving forward. And that conversation needs to be had by us as a board. With respect to the onboarding, I am very concerned about, and the board reorg, I am very concerned about limiting it to a half-day. I do- I do not think that we can get off to a good start as a board if we limit ourselves to one half-day. And I also think we need to let people who are candidates know when we're planning to do some of these things so that they can begin to set time aside, and we don't have a problem when we, when we want to meet with people not being able to attend. So, I, I think there has to be some planning and conversation about what we feel is important about the board reorg and onboarding, and makes certain that we've set aside the appropriate amount of time. Now, it may not be that we need an all-day workshop to accomplish this, but we need to have something other than just a briefing, a, a discussion at the briefing table to, to sort this out. So, that's, those are my comments for now. I may come in with more later when I've heard more from other board members.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Morgan. Mrs. LaRiviere, did you have anything else?
No, I was just hoping, we have requested for different, for workshops at different times for some of these categories, and I was just hoping that today we could come up with a tentative date to take care of those needed components that have been requested.
These two items should be part of that workshop agenda.
Which two items?
The superintendent evaluation and planning for the onboarding and board reorg.
And I would concur with that. And, and I, I think also that it probably needs to be a full day, since we are using a new instrument and we do have to set goals. And then we have to have a plan so that we can have that in place, so that when any new members come on board, they know what to expect and can plan, plan for that in their calendars. So, do we have a suggestion for a time?
And again, Ms. Fisher, if we, if there's two, if there's, if we've got the superintendent evaluation and the on, and again, I, I don't understand why we need an onboarding, a meeting to plan for, for the meeting of the onboarding. To me, it's, it's the organizational meeting. I don't know why there's a separate onboarding process to get ready for the organizational meeting, but if we have a superintendent evaluation and that's a half-day workshop, let's plan that. But to have a full day, I mean, this, you know, some of us have jobs during the day, can't afford to take a full day to do, try to cram everything into one day. And I just, I, I personally can't make that time available. So, in this short period of time between now and the time that we have to do, that you want to get these things done. And I don't see the need, again, to see, to plan. We spent inordinate amount of time, days and days of workshops to prepare all of our protocols. We got them done. To go back and revisit them now before the next board comes in, I, I just don't, I, I won't agree to that. I mean, that's just, I, I just don't see us rehashing the things that we spent a year doing to, to review it now, because all of a sudden, there's, there's more changes. Well, let's do that change again when we review it with a new board, because that's been an annual thing. Now, so that aside, superintendent evaluation, I agree with Ms. LaRiviera and with, particularly with Ms. Morgan as far as not just the evaluation part, but if, if it's gonna be a half-day workshop to do, look at the evaluation tool, as tool as far as the validity of it, and then set the goals. I think that's probably the most preeminent thing that we should be scheduling.
Right, and I think that's what it's about, is the instrument itself, since it is a, a new format that we're using now. And, and regarding the workshop, we usually have a workshop pre-board reorganization to get some of the work out of the way. And I think we need to have a, because we have new board members coming on at that time, we need to have, you know, a date certain and, and allow them the opportunity to set aside time so that we can, we need to set a schedule and an agenda, and then, you know, I, orient them before we actually go to board reorg. Mrs. Morgan, and then Mrs. Dozier?
Yeah, maybe... I would like to suggest that perhaps somebody talk to FSBA, specifically the board development people, about, you know, their suggestions about how boards operate when they expand, what their workshops include as part of the expansion, onboarding, and reorg, and come back to us with a recommendation for how we do it.
It's a good idea.
Okay, okay.
Excellent, that's a great idea.
Okay, do one of us want to volunteer to do that?
I'll get ahold of Andrea in the morning.
Okay, Mr. Toyber, we'll contact...
Mr. Dr. Atkins has his hand up.
I'm sorry.
Just, just so you know, I mean, we did reach out to FSBA, and Andrea had provided us, Sarah or Susan, I can't remember the staff member's name, but she's poised to help us. She's getting in contact with, I believe, Pinellas County, one of the ones who just recently went through the shift from five-to-seven member board to, to kind of look over, you know, what were their challenges and obstacles. We were kinda waiting on this discussion today, and then we were gonna get back in touch with her, so maybe you and I could coordinate maybe a follow-up meeting, Mr. Toyber, with her. And then also, I'm reminded, Dr. Carlin did set up some dates in advance for your consideration if we were to do any type of workshop on this, on the onboarding process. And that was Tuesday, November fifteenth, or Wednesday, November sixteenth. That's a, and that would occur in the morning, starting at nine AM until, you know, you were wanting to finish. But anyway, there are some items that you obviously would want to discuss as a group, and that's, those are the dates that she's set up to do that, or suggested to do that, I should say.
And then that would include all board members elect?
Correct, that's, we need to get that out.
Yes, okay. Then, okay...
And I'm sorry, Dr. Carlin just was out ill today, or she would have been here to do this herself, so...
Okay, all right, then, Mrs. LaRiviera, did you hear that? Dr. Atkins?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
It has been put in our calendars for November the fifteenth, for, to begin at nine AM.
And get back to us with information from FSBA regarding the process.
Yes, and if there's anything we need to do ahead of time. That's a great plan, it's been a, and we needed this discussion.
The workshop to do the eval.
Evaluation.
Thank you, okay. So, then, do we want to do that now? To schedule a time for the workshop to do the evaluation?
Well, if, if we agree that we're gonna do a half-day for the superintendent's evaluation to go over the, the instrument and the goals?
Yes.
I'll get with Susan in the morning, have her start canvassing for dates between, in the next three or four weeks. That works for everybody, and she'll coordinate with everybody and get a, get a four-hour spot to get that done.
Okay, that sounds great.
That's great, okay. Agreed.
Would, would the preference be in the morning or the afternoon?
I'm, I'm fine either way, whatever, whatever's best for the majority is fine with me.
I'm gonna say the afternoon.
I'm flexible. I will work things around and make changes in my calendar if needed.
Okay, well, then we'll leave that in Mr. Toyber's apt hands, and we will hear back from him.
Good night in the morning.
Momentarily, thank you. Okay, at this time, seeing no other business to come before this board, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.